All right, we'll call the City Council in Missouri City to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. Everyone is here. We have a quorum, and our Fire Chief, Russell Sanders, is going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please call me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's unusual that we don't have any presentations or recognitions tonight, but we don't. Item four is public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address council on any issue that is not an agenda item. Bruce?
Happy President's Day.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I see we're moving somewhere on this Fawn Meadow Bridge. Remember, this is an election year. Missouri City squanders money in all other parts of the city and can't even help out Fawn Meadow. We don't even have a city park. You've made other little parks in other parts of the city. So I see that you're going forward to remove the bridge, but the important thing is to put something in its place back. It's getting totally ridiculous. I see money being wasted all over the city on nonsense, and you have to be pushed, it seems like, to get something done here. If it wasn't for Yolanda continuing this and the media getting involved, I think you would already would have shoved it under the table. So apparently, it looks like it's going forward, but slow, but it needs to continue.
Thank you. All right, item five, our staff reports. We have a presentation by the Fire Chief on the ISO rating improvements.
Have some exciting news that we received about 10 days ago, and as my wife stated to a friend of ours, that when I received the news, that I was jumping up and down and flapping my arms. So it is very exciting, especially for fire departments. We received the information on the ISO rating, the reevaluation that happened in September at Missouri City. And I'm proud to announce that Missouri City has achieved the top rating that can be achieved of a Class One. According to ISO and the documents that were sent to us, there are only 46 cities in the state of Texas that have achieved a Class One rating, and 97 across the country. So this is truly an honor for Missouri City. The rating becomes effective August 1st of 2016. The ISO protection rating plays an important role for the underwriting process for insurance companies. Most insurance use the information as part of their decision when making deciding what business is to write, what coverage or prices to offer to the personal and commercial property insurance. Missouri City was formerly a three, or is currently a three, but August 1st will obtain that one. What does that mean to citizens? Citizens can see up to 9% on their homeowner's insurance, that's savings, 9% savings, and commercial establishments can see up to 4% savings on their insurance. It also provides the fire departments a benchmark of how we are doing compared to other fire departments across the city. This, while it seems very simple, up here, it is a very huge undertaking for us to go through this evaluation, and it could not be done with a team effort from several people across the city. Penny Hornsby in GIS developed several very detailed maps for the evaluator to utilize in his evaluation. Telecommunication operator supervisor Shannon Brunfield compiled the information that was needed for the rating of the dispatch center. Assistant Director of Public Works, Robert Upton, at the time, provided accurate information and up-to-date information on the water supplies across the city and in the ETJ. Fire Marshal Curtis Campbell gathered all the information related to fire provision activities. Chief Jaime Ponce de Leon coordinated all the ISO training over the past 10 years to make sure that we are meeting the expectations and training documentations of ISO. Police Superintendent John Foreman provided the handle inspections and stuff of the fire equipment. Lieutenant Jonathan Sabres Siller of the fire department worked with our ISO consultant several days to compile all this detailed information. And more most importantly, to the members of Missouri City Fire and Rescue Services for their work, tiring efforts over the past 10 years, paying attention to details, and really made this rating possible. The Texas State Fire Marshal has notified me that, as I said, it will go into effect August 1st. They will be here July 5th to present a plaque to the council. As I said, this is a pinnacle award for fire departments, and Mayor, you don't have a red shirt, so you can't quite be a fire truck. We will put ISO Class One on the side of the fire trucks. Once again, 97 cities across the nation have attained a Class One. This is truly an honor for Missouri City. For our Fire Chief, it's very exciting, as I said, my wife said, I was jumping up and down and flapping my arms, and it is truly exciting to us. So it's a great honor to be able to present this information to Mayor and council and to the citizens of Missouri City. So, thank you.
We need to break this out of bounds, the city limits.
So, thank you, Mayor.
Come on.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Well, I can tell you that Russell and his entire team worked tirelessly on this to make this happen, and as he said, he's not really taking all the credit that it needs because this is a huge undertaking, especially to move two whole spots, not just stop at two, but to go from, we were four one time, and we went to three, and how to jump to one was a huge, huge step for us and one that I think we all should be proud of. And like you said, only half the cities in the United States, half of the cities in the United States have this rating. That's a, you know, Texas must be doing something right because half of them are here, right?
Yes, sir.
So, anyway, good job by you all.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Now you want to indicate what the potential impact is on the citizens and the business community.
Well, he did. It's up to a 9% decrease in your insurance coverage and 4% to the businesses. I will say that a lot of the insurance agents will know this, but I can tell you, as a citizen, you need to remind them of that if they haven't thought about it because it's out there and it's something that they're may not, and I can also tell you that it will not go into effect until you renew your policy, because I've already found that out. I notified my agent, but unfortunately, I just renewed mine in January. He reminded me that it would go into effect next January. So they won't just rewrite the policy, but they will make that effective upon your renewal. And it is, 9% increase is a 9% increase, and it's...
It also goes to the state insurance conditions.
Yeah, I mean, decrease. What did I say, increase? Well, decrease, yeah. It's quite a savings. Anything we can do to help our citizens out, but anyway, thank you. All right, city manager announcement, can you beat that?
No, sir.
Okay.
Number one is always good.
[laughing].
Council, team members in all of our departments continue to make proactive progress in strategic projects. I wanted to again applaud Chief Sanders, who just provided a comprehensive overview of the ISO ratings. As most of you may know, Russell will be leaving us, retiring, and then going back to work again for Marble Falls, but wanted to take this time to thank him for his service to the city. I also wanted to share with you that effective March 1st, our Fire Marshal Curtis Campbell will be coming on as an interim while we go through a competitive process, a national search for the next Fire Chief.
No reports out of him until we find...
But at this point, you know, when you look at some of his background, I think you won't find too many Fire Chiefs who've had an opportunity to be a police officer, but emergency management coordinator, fire safety inspector, and a person who actually has a love for the fire service. So we look forward to working with him over the course of the next several months while we go through this process. So great work, Chief, for the cost savings to our citizens. We truly appreciate your service, but more importantly, ending number one for the citizens of Missouri City. If you guys can join me in giving our Fire Chief a round of applause. Mayor and council, for our fiscal year 2017 budget, last Monday, we hosted the Fiscal Year 2017 Budget Kickoff Meeting to apprise our departments of the financial planning process that we plan to follow. Our departments are now drafting their individual plans with a focus on setting realistic goals, identifying opportunities to improve existing services and programs, and then effectively manage our existing resources. So we hope to come with what we believe to be a great budget that is efficient and effective. Wanted to remind the community that we're looking forward to the Comprehensive Plan Symposium, which will be this Thursday, February 18th, at 7:00 PM in the Community Center. And let me just say, this event is a terrific opportunity to hear the voices of our citizens. So we encourage our citizens to come out. As I've stated earlier, the Comprehensive Plan is the community's vision and our opportunity to hear your voice. We're receiving strong interest and look forward to Dr. Kleinberg, who's with Rice University, his presentation and meaningful dialogue. So join us again February 18th at 7:00 PM. I wanted to give a nod, and I want to our communications team, but this past week, we had Trammell Crowe, one of their executives, to present at the 2016 Leadership Luncheon. As you know, Principal Jeremy Gardner detailed the robust growth that's going on in the Lakeview Business Park, and really, he attributed a large amount of their success to our employees, folks like Joe Ash, Scott Elmer, and other key employees who are working hand-in-hand to assist them in their development efforts. So wanted to take this time to thank our team for their support of our business partners, and we look forward to on March 10th having another one of our partners, Benny Keith, to host the next leadership series. Mayor, that concludes my report, but I would like to say, our city engineer, Robert Upton, recently departed to embark on a new professional journey, and we celebrate his exemplary contributions here and wish him continued success as well.
Good. Thank you. All right, item six is the consent agendas or a motion to approve the consent agendas printed. Councilman Emery made the motions, or a second? Councilman Ruhl has made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Item seven are public hearings and related actions. There are no zoning. Public hearings or related actions. Item eight are appointments. There are no appointments at this time. Item nine are authorizations. 9A is to consider authorizing execution of a development agreement with 349 Memorial LLC for the development of property located south of Thunderbird North Residential Subdivision, north of State Highway 6, west of the Fort Benito Road, and east of Community Park.
Mayor and council, item 9A and 9, excuse me, 9B are the same agreement with two different entities on that, and while I have here, I'd like to recognize a few people in the audience. We've got Joel Scott, he's with the Palmetto Group, that's on 9B, Annette Stevens, and Steve Robinson, attorneys for the client, Scott Burr, with 349 Memorial, and then Jeannie McDonald, who was the city's counsel and instrumental in developing these agreements, along with city staff. And Jeannie, I'll ask if you don't mind coming up in case we have any specific questions. But this is pretty much the same process that we did for the Rocky lie track on MMD 2, Missouri City Management District Number 2. This provides a mechanism where there is a refunding mechanism for developers to be able to develop their tract out here. A couple highlights in this agreement is that the customers for the utility system will be part of the city's retail customer base out there. This was a strong point that the developer and the MUD both agreed to. Subsequent action items tonight that you'll see will be to implement modifications of previous agreements with the MUD that will allow them to be our retail customers on that. The development is covering what would be PD Plan Development District 95 and 96 that was previously approved by council. It also includes various different ordinances. One thing to remember, this is not a development agreement, that's an in-city development agreement. It's not similar to, for example, the Sienna Plantation, the Riverstone Development Agreement. Those are outside the city limits. So the applicants will be subject to all the current city's rules and ordinance out there. Really, at this point, I would ask if you all have any questions on that, and Jeannie and I would be happy to assist.
Why don't we get a motion first, and then I have to...
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Smith made the motions, or a second?
Second.
Councilman Wyatt made the second. Yes, sir.
In the MMDs, it refers to public improvements.
Yes, sir.
And mechanism for paying for these public improvements. When I look at parks, I consider parks a public improvement, and somehow, it just seems to me that the MMD should develop the parks and manage the parks throughout the life of the MMD, even though, and they would be public facilities versus just kind of land with an expectation for people that the city is going to develop those properties. I think economically, it would make no sense for the MMDs to develop the public parks and, one handed.
Sure, and if I could touch on a couple items on that. The development agreement provides for the applicant to follow all the city's ordinances, including parkland dedication, at which time that the city would have the ability to accept, through our normal processes, all the public parkland that council chooses to accept on that. The MMD would not be paying for, and Steve Robinson may wish to step in on this, or the developer may, but they would not be paying for any of the pools or the HOA facility or anything like that because they're not legally able to pay for that type of structures on that. So those, the developer have informed me, would be constructed as part by the developer, turned over to homeowners association, and managed and operated by the homeowners association on that. So that would probably include maybe any of their subdivision-specific items.
I agree, I agree. I'm talking about public...
On public, the MMD...
Let me tell you what the difference is...
Yes, sir.
...to me. Okay? They're asking us to approve this within the MMD, which makes it a little bit different than just giving parkland by parkland dedication as any other developer in the city. Okay? They have the ability in the MMD to develop the public parkland, maintain the public parkland, and not spread that cause over to the rest of the city.
Sure. And I had a conversation with the developer today in regards to that item, as you mentioned, and...
If I may, may I help you?
Yeah, sure. Scott?
This is Scott Burr with 349.
Hi, how are you all?
349.
I think I maybe heard a nuance in your statement, and maybe this clears it up, but we fully intend not just to give over vacant land, but to actually develop it and dress it up, include trails, landscaping, a variety of aspects. So what we're talking about is simply working within the Parks and Recreation Ordinance System that you currently have, and whatever that process creates, be it public or private, I think we're willing to live with it. But we don't have any intention of just saying, here's five acres, you guys deal with it. We absolutely want to develop it out and have a comprehensive plan that works with our land plan and our building and our citizens and so on and so forth. Does that answer your question?
That answers the question, but that is not the answer.
Okay.
And the reason is, is because our parkland dedication only requires giving land. This doesn't talk about developing parks. It's great if you're going to do that. I have no problem with that. It needs to be in here that that's what's going to be done. Because if you're saying you're simply filing our ordinances, our ordinances don't require any of the things that you said you're going to do.
Councilman Wyatt, I think it's maybe not as clear as you'd like it to be, but the management district is definitely going to develop the parks. And what we did is we gave them, yet incented, to them having the power to sell bonds to build parks. What we did was we included in here a procedure so that, we don't know what they're going to build yet, they have to bring us their plans for developing the park, and we will look at those and approve the plans and specs. We have in there that they're going to maintain the parks during the life of the parks while they own them, and we will only, the city will only agree to take facilities or parks to own and maintain that we want to. But other than that, we have the maintenance taken care of by the district while the district is in existence, and we have a provision that says when the district is going to be dissolved, you have to make an agreement with the association to maintain the parks. So we're looking at the long-term maintenance and development, and it's just going to come in phases as they develop.
And all I'm saying, if you're going to do all of this, if you want me to vote on this agreement tonight, you need to put it in here. It doesn't change anything other than it's a part of the agreement, because the agreement doesn't say what you just told me, neither one, this one or the other.
The biggest problem we have is that we don't have their park plan, it's not designed...
Don't need their park plan. To say that the parks are going to be public parks, that they're going to be built by them and maintained by them, that's all I'm asking to be put in here. That's not in here.
If your concern is that you just want to make sure that there's no additional cost to the city...
That's right.
We're absolutely on the problem saying that we're going to maintain it within the HOA structure of the community.
There you go.
Is that what you're looking for, sir?
Yeah, because it doesn't say that in here. So we need to amend this to include that.
And I would just tell you guys, as long as, I'm not as verbose in y'all's ordinances and the rules and regulations, so I kind of lean on these folks.
Well, I understand that, but I know what our ordinances say you have to do if you were just a regular developer. You would just give us some land, and we would develop at some other point in time when we got some money.
That's fine. We absolutely put on that.
I believe staff and the landowner and the attorneys have a clear direction, and if that's council's decision when they vote, we can modify these ordinances to put something in there that says that parks, public parks accepted by the city will be developed and turned over to the city as developed parks and...
Can we do that right now, so when we...
If I...
This is one reading.
Sure, if I may, though, really quickly, there is a line in the agreement that states that the developer agrees to make binding arrangements to have the parks and recreational facilities not accepted by the city to be maintained by an entity other than the city prior to the city's dissolution of the district.
I don't even like entity other than the city. It needs to be the management district. They're asking us for an agreement. The agreement is with the management district.
This actual...
And I know that's tricky, but...
This actual agreement, though, is with the developer. It's not with the management district itself. If the management district has the obligation to maintain, when we dissolve the management district, the city gets the obligation to maintain.
Yeah, that's 30 years. That's way over there.
There is. That's why we said...
I'm talking about right now.
It says right now, they're going to maintain them, okay? And that they're going to maintain them, and if they're going to be dissolved, then they're going to find another entity other than the district that will maintain them. We took care of the law.
Your concern is not maintenance. I think maintenance is properly addressed. Your concern is that we just convey raw land to you.
That's right.
We're fine saying, we're going to have to go through your process of your ordinance, but if the answer is, is it the developer's intention to provide developed parks within? The answer is yes. They can't sell homes, you know, on raw land parks. They're going to develop them with trails.
So we can make sure we say in here that...
We can say developed parks.
Develop and maintain.
Yeah, the maintenance is already addressed. It already says we've got to maintain. That's already in there. We've got to maintain, unless you take them, we've got to maintain.
We'll make sure you keep them all.
And if that's the answer, you know, we...
So can we insert, develop?
So maybe some language that says that the intent of the developer is to...
Convey developed...
Develop, develop property.
Or improve, improve parkland or some, improve parkland.
Okay, that's my amendment, if I can get a second.
I have another question.
Wait, Yolanda, second my amendment. Now you can ask the question.
Through this amendment, this is still considered a public park open to all Missouri City residents?
It must be.
Okay.
Must be. In order for us to use our bond proceeds, it must be open to the entire public. It cannot be limited.
We need to vote on the amendment first. There was a motion by Councilman Wyatt and a second by Councilwoman Ford. All those in favor of the amendment? Motion carries. Then there was a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Smith and a second by Councilman Wyatt on the original motion. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item B...
Same thing.
I would ask if the developer, Joel, if y'all would agree to that same wording?
You're agreeing with that.
Oh, is?
Yes, there, Marshal.
Yeah, there isn't park, there is just commercial park.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Then there was a motion by Wyatt and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Smith. There's no questions. Well...
But they are maintaining everything in the public right of way.
That is correct. That's in here. Yes, sir.
Does that include the mayors? Does that include the medians?
Is there any divided roads here? Lake Olympia, Vicksburg would all be divided roadways, and what was put in here would be any improvements in that right of way, they would maintain on that. Because, you know, all right.
But there's no requirement to put the improvements in it.
No.
But if they do, they'll maintain them. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item C is consider authorizing the execution of a utility agreement with Fort Bend County Municipal Utility District Number 48.
Mayor and council, this modifies our previous agreement with Mud 48, where this allows these residents to be the customers of the city of Missouri City on that.
Actually, if I may, quick correction, this is not the modification of the existing agreement.
Sorry, I was reading the wrong one. My apologies.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith made the motion. Is there a second?
This is the new utility agreement with Mud 48.
Okay.
What are y'all doing? Y'all confusing us.
Yeah, sorry. This is a new agreement between us and Mud 48. The next item is the actual modification of that agreement that says this new agreement governs on that.
Well, I'm looking at here.
So your motion and the second?
Same.
All those in favor? Indeed, consider authorizing the execution of a utility and road agreement with Missouri City Management District Number 1. Their motion?
So move.
Councilman Wyatt made the motion. Mayor Pro Tim Smith made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item E is consider authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the Regional Waste Water Treatment Facilities Agreement and the First Amendment to the Regional Joint Water Facilities Agreement between the city of Missouri City and Fort Bend County Municipal Utility District Number 48. This is, yes, their motion.
So move. Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith made the motion. Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item M is to consider authorizing the parkland dedication proposal for the Cartwright Town Homes Residential Subdivision.
Mayor and council, this is a parkland dedication. This property is located, is located north of the Texas Pride Car Wash out there. They propose 40 single-family residential townhomes. The applicant is requesting that they be allowed to pay $1,400 per dwelling unit, the parkland fee. The city, county staff, and Parks Board, planning and zoning, all recommend positive that we accept the $1,400 per dwelling unit.
So move. What park zone?
This would be, I can't remember the park zone number, but this is one with Quora Valley North Park and Independence Park and that central area of the city out there.
Councilman Ruhl has made the motion. Councilman Roulis made the motion, Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor, motion carries.
I'm glad to see that they're doing something.
Yeah, item 10, ordinances 10.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing for a general election to be held on May 7th, 2016, for the purpose of electing a mayor and two at-large council members, providing for a joint election on May 7th, 2016, with other entities contracting with the Fort Ben County, I apologize, contracting with Fort Ben County for such joint election, providing for election precincts and polling places, providing for repeal, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Is there a motion? You got to read the, you have to read the Spanish here, Maria?
No, I don't have to read it.
We couldn't make it?
I can try, but I won't.
You can try. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilman Emery made the motion, Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor, motion carries.
That's it, huh? I don't have one more.
Item 11 are resolutions, 11A.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, granting consent to the creation of Missouri City Management District Number 1, a political subdivision of the state of Texas, to be located wholly within the corporate limits of the city of Missouri City, Texas, and providing for severability.
Their motion.
So moved. Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith made the motion, Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. 11B.
A resolution of the, a resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, granting consent to Missouri City Management District Number 1 to annex certain land situated within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
So moved. Second.
Councilman, Mayor Pro Tim Smith made the motion, Councilman Roulis made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Item C.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, approving the submission of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Formula Grant application to the Criminal Justice Division of the Office of the Governor through the Houston-Galveston Area Council to fund the purchase of automated license plate recognition systems needed by the police department to prevent auto theft and other crimes associated with vehicles.
You're going to get that far.
And containing other provisions related there, too.
I'm interested to know what this does.
Oh, you don't know what it does?
Oh.
Certainly hasn't has it already.
Staff is requesting the authorization to apply for the automated license plate reader system again. We applied for it last year, and we were not awarded it last, awarded the grant last year, so we're going to try again. It's around a $60,000 grant. There's no match for, through HGAC. You say, how does it work? It's just, right now, officers have to type in your seven, six or seven-digit license plate. This system, it runs it automatically. As they drive around, it runs it automatically, and it's attached to stolen cars, amber alerts, silver alerts, anything to have to do with a vehicle, it'll run that plate. It could be a wanted person.
And they can drive to a parking lot and scan, and there are shopping centers, and it'll scan those license plates and hit if it's something there. So, it's, it's a neat program.
We applied for the grant last year. Did we get any feedback as to where we were as far as in the pecking order, or what some of the?
I made contact with HGAC, and they just said they only have a certain amount of funds. A lot of grants are already continuation grants, so that's why we're going to try again.
Is this also the same situation that's posted at certain intersections?
No, these will actually be attached to vehicles.
Vehicles, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very similar to what the toll road recognition system works.
That's actually outstanding. Some of the wrecker services also in, also, and we tap into some of their databases. What HGAC said last year is, like the captain said, they funded up to a certain number, there's only so many dimes in the bucket. So, they didn't object us because it was a bad idea, they just simply ran out of money.
In our application to them, are we showing them how many stolen cars?
Statistics, yes, sir.
The statistics that we have.
We have to provide that, how many stolen cars. Yes, sir.
Have you seen that, Floyd?
No, not yet.
You might want to provide that to Floyd since he serves on the HGAC.
When's the, the grant to be applied for?
The submission date by February 26.
Okay.
I'll make a meeting.
Do you have any, do you have anything?
No, sir, I'm just up here to field any questions.
No, I meant to give me, let me, let's chat a little bit, because I've got a meeting with HGAC tomorrow. Just get him a copy of the application.
Assistant or report will accompany the application, so we'll send all that documentation in, but we'll make sure you have.
I made a motion.
He did. Is there a second? Yeah? No, I didn't have a second. Motion by Councilman Emery, second by Councilman Wyatt. All those in favor, motion carries. Council, announcements are 12. Chris, do you have any announcement?
I just wanted to say kudos to police department, fire department as well, but Sergeant Hurd and I had the unique opportunity to speak with the students at Progressive High School last week. And it was a great opportunity to engage with tomorrow's leadership and tomorrow's future. So, I wanted to thank the police department for taking part in that, and the communications department for coming out and also being engaged.
Good, yeah. Jerry?
Thanks to the Fort Ben Independent for publishing the speech that I gave on black history in Missouri City. I hope everybody will at least get that and have an opportunity to read it. I found it very interesting to write it, so, and I'm getting feedback, a lot of people very interested to, after they read that information. It shows a lot of good progress that have occurred in the city.
Roland?
No.
Yolanda?
Sure. I participated in the championship for Winter Guard Sports of Arts, so that was at the Hobson, Hobson Field at High Tower. This is the event that the city gave up the hot tax for, and we ended up having 11 guests at the Hampton Hotel, and a lot of out-of-town guests who came into our city. They ate here, they slept here, and they also had vendors in the, in the gym there from Missouri City. So, it was a good event and a good example of how the hot tax can work. So, I enjoyed that event. And then I think the CPAC committee and the team around it's done a really good job promoting that event, and hopefully we get a really good turnout, because there are signs everywhere, lots of good communications coming out of our communications department. That's it.
I have nothing.
You have nothing about your event?
Well, we talked about it a lot. It was good.
Okay, had a good turnout, didn't you? Have nothing else? All right, that's it. Thank you all.